Good evening, Hallstead, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the council meeting to order. And the first thing I'm going to ask is for agenda changes.
No agenda changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. And now I'm going to move on for the approval of the consent agenda. And again, tonight, please state your name very loudly so the microphone on our tab in the back of the room can pick it up. We're going to continue to have Jamie reread motions and make sure that we get the record correct tonight.
George Torres. Ms. Mayor, I would make a motion, if there's no discussion or questions, to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mike Wallace, second.
And now we will go to Jamie for the official review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the consent agenda for May 26, 2020, with a second by Councilmember Wallace.
We've got the motion and the second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. We are going to move on to unfinished business. And the first item is consideration of ordinance number 1299. And this deals with grass clippings and debris in gutters and streets. And we'll go to Ethan for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This was continued from our last meeting. We did, we had a few clerical errors on the ordinance and did get final approval from City Attorney Jantsch. This would add to our environmental code, yard debris, grass clippings, other detritus, if you will, that is positive either in rights of way, alleys, or the gutters was the main city storm water system. So this would allow us to send letters to homeowners and property owners that have, you know, willfully cluttered the, cluttered those ways with any kind of debris. Or we can also have the option of summoning them to municipal court. Obviously, there are concerns with flooding our storm boxes or just any debris on the street, of course, is a public safety hazard. So this will put language into our code that previously was not there, allowing us to get a little more serious with people that are not paying any attention to what they're doing when they mow their yards or clean up their properties.
I do have one question. Now, this notice will be served days after the fact. And wind can blow, things can be moved around, and at that point, time to say, well, I have nothing that you can test it.
Yeah.
Is this, how do we make it stick?
Um, we would do it like we do weed the yard. I mean, most of the issues that were really, I mean, anytime you mow your lawn, especially if you're going to the curb line like you should, you're probably going to get a little bit of grass, and we're not concerned about this. This is people that are shooting through their tire. And I will tell you, most of the time, we have neighbors that usually are calling saying, "Dave," the next day, that let us know. Or it's very visible for like our officers or public works crews who drive around the city on a few basis. And that is, luckily, as the agenda report, you know, states, this is not, I would say, a very common occurrence, but we do have unfortunately some properties that are frequently engaging in this habit. And so hopefully, this gives us the tools to incentivize them to do better and pay more attention more to putting that. And the one issue we added that we'd really like to is alleys. There are some alleys in town where people, you know, they catch their yard, but they just dump back in the alley, and then eventually that gets into the alley itself. And people are swerving to miss the grass pile, so this would allow us to go back there and say, hey, you know, this needs to be cleaned up because you're diverting the normal flow of traffic or causing a hazard.
Well, and worse than the grass is in the hall when you get the leaves. You get big old trees, dump leaves out the middle of the street, and they just don't get picked out. If there's no further comments or questions, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance 1299, an ordinance amending the Hallstead City Code, Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8, 2A08, Subpart A. To further regulate items, lawn waste or debris on streets or public ways, which alley would fall under public way, or of any kind of character, repealing any and all other ordinances in conflict here.
Second.
And that was Sam Farmer making the motion, and Ed Campbell, if they didn't state their names first. I'm going to go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer to adopt ordinance number 1299, an ordinance amending the Hallstead City Code, Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8-2A08, Subpart A, to further regulate items, lawn waste or debris on streets or public ways of any kind or character, and repealing any and all other ordinances in conflict here with, with a second by Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, you've got the motion and the second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, Council. That one passes unanimously. We'll move on to our next item, which is consideration of ordinance number 1300, and covers private use of public rights of way. And Ethan will bring us up to par on that one.
Thank you, Council. Mayor, we plan to have this ready for action. As Brad and I, again, looking, we did notice, actually, there's another section of our current city code that covers rights of way. Discovered pretty late, so we are asking for this to be tabled till our next meeting to make sure that we're not either, you know, going against anything that's currently already in code. Actually, looking at it, there's a lot that we already wanted, rest that's in there. There's a few things we want clarified. So as opposed to having two sections and two completely different chapters of our code, we're working on getting it consolidated into one article, one chapter. That way, staff or the public can easily look in our public rights of way and find all the rules that govern it, not be in two different places. So as much as we don't want to pin it, we're asking to pin action on this for two more weeks so we can get those kinks worked out, and then we'll have it ready to go for our next G8 council meeting.
Oh, Mike Wallace, I'll make a motion to table action on the ordinance number 1300 to the next regular city council meeting.
Same, Farmer, second.
And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to table action on ordinance number 1300 to the next regular city council meeting, seconded by Councilmember Farmer.
Okay, we've got the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously to table that issue. Now, we're going to move on to new business tonight. And first is a presentation and funding request from the Kansas Learning Center for Health. And I believe we have Carrie Herman with us tonight to stay in tune with the COVID requirements. Jamie has went out to get her. So I've already made an introduction, and you're on.
Okay. Hello. Thank you for letting me come in and visit with you guys. I put, or you should have in your packet, a couple of pictures of what we're doing at the Kansas Learning Center for Health. And the first one is a rendering of the actual building that's going to be built by Sturdy Built. And it's a 20-foot by 30-foot with railing. We have shingle roof, so it'll look a little more home-like, painted with some blue and taupe. We've received some funding already. Blue Cross provided $5,000, Cox Charity provided $5,000, and Cargill Cares provided $7,500. And a part of, we're not just in the pavilion, we're doing an herb garden. And so I put a couple pictures of the start of our garden. We bought some nice planters that were built locally. And then we've started growing herbs inside the learning center. And we're going to be transporting and transplanting them out into the bigger planters here soon once we get the building up. And so this is kind of our start for doing more of a community garden, pavilion area. We're going to have benches, picnic tables. Next year, we'll probably, it's kind of phase one. Next year, we want to make it bigger and expand a little bit more into the grassy area. But for this year, we wanted to do a little bit at a time, so we're just focusing on the herbs and getting the structure in place and the picnic tables and benches. So right now, we're looking at the total cost being probably close to $30,000. And we have one more grant we're writing to seek funding support from. So we'd like to ask the city for $10,000 to help support that project. And I would welcome any questions you guys have, because I did that very fast.
Carrie?
Yes.
How many people does the Learning Center bring annually on average to the city of Houston?
Around 15,000 visitors is how many we see each year. About a third of them are from Harvey County, about a third from Sedgwick County, and then Reno County has quite a few. And then it's, we have about 13, 14 counties that we serve and that come here. In addition to that, we also go on the road and do some, some teaching, like up to northwest Kansas. There's 26 counties that we can go up into and teach. We do some up in Lunsberg. We even go to Hutch and McPherson and do some on the road. So we usually see around 15,000. This year's a little different year. We got affected at the peak time of our school year, so, yeah.
Fantastic. Major draw into the city.
Yes, yes. And one of the things we would like with having picnic tables and benches is, a lot of the schools will come in and want to eat lunch somewhere. And we have a basement, but sometimes we have two groups there, and so it kind of makes it hard. And they want to go outside, and we don't really have any place outside on our property. Oftentimes, they will go, if they have time, they'll go down to Scout Park, but then they come back to Learning Center to utilize the bathroom facilities. So we're trying to do what we can to, to support them and to have nice location. I have written a grant for an outdoor water fountain and, like a water bottle filling faucet, so I'm not sure if we'll get it or not, but that's something we would like to also have out there. We've written a grant to get a bike repair station and a bike rack out there, too. So hopefully, we'll find out soon on some of those things, but we want to kind of have that all be in that center area. And it's on the west side of our building, in the parking lot.
When you, when you have groups come in like that with substantial numbers, and you know, you probably know ahead of time they're going to use the pavilion and have lunch and so forth, is that information shared with our Main Street vendors that are in the food industry to where that can be marketed from, you know, say Subway to the Learning Center to where they can benefit from this draw, if you say?
We haven't yet, but that would be something that if schools ask us about food locations, we're happy to share that information. A lot of times, the bus drivers will come in and ask, and so we'll let them know what's available. A lot of times with the schools, because of the students, we serve a lot of Wichita schools that don't have the financial background, so they bring a lot of school lunches, you know, sack lunches with them. So, but yes, definitely, we'd like to do more of that if we can.
Great. Thank you. Everybody else on the council, last questions for Carrie? Well, I know, I do notice a lot of these schools come in and out of town because they do always go to Scout Park, and it's always interesting to see the different names on the buses when I go by there. Ethan, if this is something the council would wish to do, where would that funding come from, and do we have it available?
Yeah, we actually, you know, from a staff visitor with Carrie several times last year, you know, talked a lot about some of the long-term plans they actually have for their campus, with it being separately located in Hallstead, obviously being an asset that Hallstead has that no other community can like claim to. And asked if there was a way, as we partner with several agencies, be it of settlers or whomever, to help promote the community or things for the public. You know, the city at one time got with that community, or had a community garden, but it's very hard for the city to maintain this being volunteered and having a presence, we felt, actually meant the public purpose, you know, because it will open to the community to use. So we built it into the community benefit budget from the general fund, and it is a specified line item, so it is an anticipated expenditure for our 2020 budget.
And this will be a little bit, not as traditional as something like the community garden that you guys have had in the past. The Learning Center will be the main, people taking care of it with some volunteers, board members volunteering. We hope to maybe expand that. We've talked with the youth director, you know, is also one of our instructors at the Methodist Church, and I think he would like to get the youth involved in doing some things there. We're going to let people know when herbs are ready to be clipped and used, and we're going to have recipe cards available so they know how to use them. And we want to get them out to the community and help educate healthier ways of eating. So it will be for the community.
Does this also tie in with your theme on the farm to market?
Yeah. Yeah, we're also building a big exhibit. Tricia, whoever is the one that's been designing that, and we're hoping to have both projects done in time for old sellers, and have a big opening and reopening back up to the public type of events. But yeah, it kind of follows through with the whole, where does your food come from? How does it get to your table? These kids that come in from Wichita, have never seen a field, they think their milk comes from a grocery store, they have no clue. And so we want to educate everybody that walks in our doors on where their food comes from, help stimulate maybe some thoughts on going into agriculture and becoming farmers, and some of those different career opportunities they might not otherwise think of. And so that's what we want to do, is help provide that. And it also kind of goes hand in hand with some of our nutrition programs that we teach, too. We have a smaller, younger grade, farm-to-family nutrition program, and then we have some other nutrition programs up through fourth grade that we teach.
The thing that's really impressive about that, and I guess maybe I know a little bit about it, but I tell you what, it really, really focused on the community of Hallstead when they started this project. The amount of funding that was raised by organizations and companies around Hallstead that went out even on a national level and brought monies into the Learning Center for all that work we're doing, it's just absolutely phenomenal.
Yeah, Jack Queen from the Co-op helped spearhead a lot of fundraising, and then wrote matching grants from like Land O' Lakes Foundation and CHS and just different places. And so the funding we got, about half of it came from the Co-op or his connections with getting some matching funds. And then we wrote some other grants to help with it, too.
That's a special thank you to Jack.
Yeah.
Well, this is Sam Farmer. If there's no further questions or comments, I would make a motion to approve the donation to the Kansas Learning Center for Health, a pavilion project in an amount to exceed $10,000.
Ed Campbell's sentence, sentence.
Okay, we've got the motion and second on the floor. We'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer to approve donation to the Kansas Learning Center for Health, for pavilion project, in an amount not to exceed $10,000, seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
Okay, there's the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. You're welcome, and I thank you for being a big part of Hallstead, and we look forward to continuing our relationship with you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
That's going to take us to our next item under new business, and that is the 2019 audit presentation from Coniston Monroe. And Jamie is bringing, she's only at the end of the room, and she's at the podium, ready to go. So good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at the preliminary draft that was included with the packet. Otherwise, you should have a bound, a final bound copy of the audit report. Page one and page two actually present the independent auditor's report. This report is based on the basis of the financial reporting provisions of the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. It is the predominant method of presentation for smaller municipalities within the state of Kansas, and it is a regulatory basis approved by the state. So the second page of that, the second paragraph says, "In our opinion, the financial statement referred to above presents fairly, in all material respects, the aggregate cash and unencumbered cash balance of the city as of December 31, 2019, and the aggregate receipts and expenditures for the year then ended in accordance with the financial reporting provisions of the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide, as described in Note 1." So we're issuing an unqualified opinion or a clean opinion on the K-MAG regulatory basis of accounting. The next page, page three, actually presents the financial statement of the city. It's a summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. Beginning unencumbered cash for the city, for the total reporting entity, was $4,392,621. Total receipts, $7,615,543. Total expenditures, $7,678,181, for ending unencumbered cash balance of $4,329,983. The modification, then, to get back to the actual ending cash balance per the city's books, is to add back encumbrances and accounts payable totaling $385,887. So your ending cash balance at December 31, 2019 was $4,715,870. Composition of cash is included at the bottom of the financial statement. That does include, your, your financial reporting entity does actually include two related municipal entities, the library and the rec commission. So those are all incorporated within here. The next page starts the notes to the financial statements. These are an integral part of the financial statement itself. Note 1 presents the summary of significant accounting policies. This is where it talks about the regulatory basis funds, the regulatory basis of accounting versus generally accepted accounting principles. Your requirements for budgetary procedures are noted on page 5. Page 6, note 2, I would point out that there were no statutory violations within the city during the year ended December 31, 2019. At December 31, 2019, the deposits and investments note down at the bottom of the page, as I pointed out, the city's deposits were that $4.7 million. The bank balance was $4,773,116. Everything was covered either by depository securities or FDIC insurance. Next page, note 4 presents your long-term debt. General obligation bonds, at the end of the year, $2.34 million. KDHE loans of $211,000. Your defined pension, defined benefit pension plan, of course, under capers. The point I would make on that one, on page 8, is the city's proportionate share of collective net pension liability is $972,809. That does incorporate the library, since the library is no longer reported separately and is all incorporated now through the city's books, as far as paying the salaries. Other long-term obligations from operations, there is the death and disability, post-employment benefits, and compensated absences. There is a commitment still on the books for the Public Wholesale Water Supply District. That is an agreement that the city had entered into with several other cities. There is a, still a balance that will be paid off in 2020. The balance at December 31 was $25,620. You have various inter-fund transfers, as noted on page 10. And then the regulatory required supplementary information actually starts on page 11. As you can see, this is the summary of expenditures, actual and budget. There were no budget violations. And then it goes on into the individual funds, so the general fund, and then the special purpose funds. I don't think there's really anything significant to point out within any of those. Anybody has any questions on the financial statements themselves? We do also issue a communication letter that everybody should have received a copy of also. This is required on an annual basis. We had no significant issues while we were doing the audit. Your staff is excellent to work with. Ethan does a great job. Jamie does a great job, and all the rest of the city staff does a great job also. There was one major material, I guess I would say, entry that we came across this year. We've actually never run across encumbrances that needed to be recorded in past years. This was a little different. So you will see on that first page that we did note, following material in the statement detected as a result of audit procedures and was corrected by management, was to record encumbrances to the city equipment reserve of $82,000 and capital equipment reserve of $261,388. That related to the golf course clubhouse renovations that weren't done by the end of the year, but that had been committed, as well as the street project that was anticipated to have been done by the end of the year, but was committed. The other piece, I think, was, was it related to the fire department? That it was Eagle Air?
The air compressor, basically, it was all the capital projects where you guys had authorized, and we thought they'd be done by the end of the budget year. And it was delayed weather, and then the contractors on the other two projects delayed us. So yeah, it was the SCDA bill station, you know, the third we had worked. But we encumbered the money and hadn't spent it yet.
Yes. So it's included as an expenditure within the city's 2020 budget. The cash actually gets paid out in, or in the 2019 budget, the cash gets paid out in the 2020 budget, but it won't be reflected as an expenditure within the 2020 budget per the audit report. So, anyway. Like I said, it was just a little bit different this year. So Ethan didn't really want to have to do that. I said, I'm really sorry. But, anyway. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, it's very lengthy reading.
There's a lot to it.
Well, we know that Ethan and Jamie do their best to do our budget, put these together, and we completely trust them, but it is nice to have that third party overseeing it and get good reports back. So thank you for your time this evening.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity. Like I said, you have great staff.
Thank you.
All right. We will actually, we will file this with the state.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow morning.
Okay.
We don't need any action on that report.
Yeah, you want a motion and a second to accept. The audit was presented by...
Ed Campbell, motion to accept and approve the 2019 fiscal year audit as presented. Mike Wallace, second.
And we'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to accept and approve the 2019 fiscal year audit as presented, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
There's the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously to accept our... Next thing on the agenda, consideration of ambulance service agreement with the city of Sedgwick. Ethan will bring us up to par, and we will welcome the council's question. Ethan will bring us up to the floor and we will welcome the council's question.
All right, so in your packet you have the draft for another three-year ambulance service agreement between the city of Halsted to provide ambulance service to the city of Sedgwick. I tried to leave the changes from the existing contract highlighted there for you. So the mayor and myself met with their administrator, their mayor and administrator, and Sedgwick has expressed desire and asked that be noted that they want to take their service back. So that you will notice was added in the whereas that they have indicated that they're going to try and get that back. And later in the agreement, we just asked that they give us annual updates of where they're at in that process so we can continue to be prepared. The noticeable change for all the entities is the price was for the last three years, $150,000 per year. We have raised that to $170,000 after just reviewing, you know, we put the price point together four years ago now. We didn't have really good data to, you know, this was a new undertaking by all of us. We, you know, we had an idea and could look at some of our numbers and extrapolate that based on what their anticipated coal volume was, but over the last two years, we've seen the reality of the demand that's put on our equipment, our people, the changing face of EMS in general as far as being very competitive and sought-after field. We are in the middle of many large jurisdictions, so we have to be extremely competitive when trying to hire paramedics or EMTs. So we felt that a price increase to keep with the council's request many years ago, which was that this would not be ever subsidized by Halsted taxpayer money, was to set that price. We felt on the analysis that that $170,000 going forward, and we do have the option, which we did not previously have, to increase that via the CPI just to keep up with things like fuel price increases or things we didn't have going forward. But that is completely discretionary on the city of Halsted's department. You're not obligated to seek that increase, but we do have the option every year to come back and do that. Staffing, we updated the staffing requirements just to be in line more with what the legal language is used by the state board of EMS. And then the insurance, because we switched insurance carriers, they asked to look at any existing contracts we had and then submitted their language based on coverages they offered, what they would like to see. So we updated that with their language. And that's kind of the major changes. Did note, in the event, there was separability between us and the city of Sedgwick. Sedgwick would still be responsible essentially for remitting to Halsted the remainder of whatever's due under the contract term. If Halsted would inform Sedgwick, last time we just put a lump sum of $50,000 that the Halsted would remit to Sedgwick. This time around, we did put that we would refund any payments they'd made to us any budget year back to them if we were ever, you know, called them up someday and said, we just can't do this anymore, which is not our plan or any of that, but we felt that was a little more fair to them than picking just an arbitrary number, because obviously they would be scrambling to try and get a service for their city if that were to happen. So those are the major changes from what we had. I will gladly answer any questions. We did, of course, have the original agreement was verified and looked over by independent counsel four years ago. We have not made any substantial changes outside of dollar amounts. And Brad was able to give us his opinion on the insurance that he felt that was all still legally enough. So he took no issue with the legal language. So city attorney has signed off on it as far as from a legal standpoint. He, of course, decides he's not weighing in on the actual terms of the agreement as far as price point or that, because he does have a relationship with both cities. So just point out, from a legal standpoint, he believes it is a good and enforceable contract, and that is where his opinion is. So.
What is your sense, I guess for both of you, of what Sedgwick, of their position?
Well, I think I'm comfortable in saying they want to reestablish their EMS service. I think there are ways off from being able to do it. And I let them know, as long as the council is on board, we would continue to be a good steward and offer the service. But again, it couldn't come at a cost to the taxpayers here locally. So I believe they understood that. And we wish, well, we do hope that they can reestablish their EMS service. And in the meantime, I guess we will, we will extend our offering of continuing to offer that until we can get to that point. So any of you other council members have any questions?
Yeah, this is Sam Farmer, and I have one question on the Consumer Price Index, Ethan. We have our basic minimum charge that we're charging to the city of Sedgwick to maintain. If we go into year two of the Consumer Price Index, we'll use that only for an increase, but we will not decrease our charges that we have under the contract should the Consumer Price Index drop. Probably won't, but we will not lower the rates.
No, that's why we wrote it as a completely discretionary, as we look at numbers as they come in for the year and determine, because you might get, you know, obviously there's enough of a cushion there to subsidize, but you know, consumer price is only a half percent or something because of the economy. There's not a, there would be enough of a cushion to say, it was more bad as it composed to a 4% increase where we would need to. So yeah, we're, we don't, 170 isn't the floor. Okay.
Oh, I have.
Well, there's no other questions or discussion. This is George Torres, I would make a motion to approve the ambulance service agreement with the city of Sedgwick for a term of three years and authorize Mayor Travis to sign the document.
So Sam Farmer, and I will second that. Okay, we've got the motion in the second. We'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Torres to approve the ambulance service agreement with the city of Sedgwick for a term of three years and authorization for the mayor to sign the document, seconded by Councilmember Farmer.
There's the motion in the second officially, and now call for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time. Motion carries unanimously, and we will maintain our partnership with the city of Sedgwick. Okay, we'll move on to the next item under new business, which is consideration of an agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation.
I think this mayor council in the packet was an agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation for their transportation alternatives program. This document's required for us to continue moving forward with that Safe Routes to School Phase 1 Plan, Phase 1 grant that we were awarded. So not a lot, this is a pretty boilerplate agreement that KDOT requires on these grants. I did note, we're currently, Superintendent Barry and myself had a Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago with KDOT representation and kind of ideas of how we need to get this forward. We're looking probably at putting together a committee that will involve school, city, you know, parks and recreation, maybe the Harbin County Health Department, they've done a lot with walkability and are really pushing some other grants that maybe the city would be eligible for. But the end goal of this is to get a Safe Routes to School master plan, which then allows you to go after even more infrastructure building, educational aspects. You know, there's many aspects of Safe Routes to Schools. It's not just about building sidewalks. They really want to know, you know, are you encouraging things like walking school buses? Everything, obviously for compliance and things we think about, you know, are your sidewalks ADA accessible? But, you know, are the crosswalks, the school pays for vanguard, those kinds of things of safety? And what's the education component, you know? RPD goes there, are they teaching kids, you know, you need to cross at the crosswalks, not just walk across any random thing? So they're really looking for more comprehensive plans, not just building sidewalks. And so we have to have a plan to be successful in pursuing the next round of grant monies to have a plan that addresses all of these aspects in this. Hopefully will allow us to get a consultant and help us develop that plan, so.
Well, Mike Wallace, if there's no further discussion, I'm making, you did?
Yeah, I have one, one question. Here's Sam Farmer. This is, this is the initial award for the $12,000. What will be the next step? And what would be, do you have any idea what the dollar amount would be going forward or timeframe going forward?
Yeah, I mean, we are probably, you know, with everything being kind of delayed, it's doubtful that we'll be able to have, because this money also is a pass-through from federal government. So it runs on the federal fiscal year, which is, of course, not June, July, you know, it's October through September. So we will get to my October. Hopefully, you know, if the stars align, we're able to get and hit the ground running, we would maybe be able to apply in not '21, but '22, and then hopefully be in that next round. So from a federal standpoint, it'll almost be like a two-year out. And that was just KDOT's best guess for how long they've seen just the master plan is taking to develop and get to a point. And as far as infrastructure, a lot of it depends on where we're at financially, because the city has an obligation to make a 25% funding, no matter what. Yeah.
Okay, so we've got $12,000 for the last two years, basically.
And this is mostly to do a study and repair plan?
This is, yeah, basically doing a master plan. You'll maybe get some outlines as far as, hey, we'd really like to see sidewalks in this corridor, but they won't, this plan most likely would not be at the point where it's actually engineered and saying, okay, for sure, we're putting six foot here and five foot here. That will come with Phase 2 and construction, so.
Okay, Mike Wallace, there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for the transportation alternatives program and authorization for Mayor Travis to sign.
Ed Campbell, second. Okay, we've got the motion, second. We'll go to Jamie for the review.
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to approve the agreement with the Kansas Department of Transportation for the transportation alternatives program and authorization for Mayor Travis to sign, seconded by Councilmember Campbell.
Hey, there's the official motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And it's a step in the right direction for an initiative that I had talked about when I was on the council, bringing some more sidewalks to town. So this is the right step in the right direction. Letting into the new business section of our agenda, and now we move on to executive session. And it sounds like we're going to have one of those this evening, so I'll entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss job performance of an employee pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1, to include governing body and city manager. Open meeting to resume at 8:00.
Mike Wallace, second.
Got the motion in second to go into executive session, and Jamie will give us the review.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell to move the Halsted City Council into recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss job performance of an employee pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75-4319B1, and to include the governing body and city manager, the open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 8:00 PM, seconded by Councilmember Wallace.
There's the motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, same sign. Passing unanimously, we will be moving to another room. Okay, council is filtering back in from our executive session. Just get everybody seated again. Is there any action to take as a result of our executive session, council? Seeing no movement on the floor, we will move on to the next item, and that is reports. Before I ask for the governing body, Jamie has some public comments that have come in via Facebook, so we'll let her read those tonight.
To whom it may concern, we would like to file a formal complaint concerning Walnut Street and Ninth and Walnut. Almost all roads in Halsted were resurfaced this year, except these roads, which are in bad need of repair. Pine Street was last year and now again this year, while our 50-years-old road has very large holes in it. We pay taxes and don't think it is unreasonable to expect the city to keep them up. We have a disabled person in the neighborhood in a wheelchair using these roads. Please reconsider making needed repairs. Thank you for your attention in this matter. Kermit and Barb Lowen, Jim and Kathy Hayden, Misty McNamara, Carl and Lynell Misskimmens, William Windley, Arling Jordan, Rick and Chris Wilmack, Marty Sigwig, and Scott and Ann Eason.
Okay, council, any comments regarding Jamie's presentation? I will say this, we do recognize the issues that we have with streets in town. And you know, our, our hands are kind of tied right now as watching our budget carefully. We do have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in Halsted and spending your money wisely and at the same time making sure the city don't go broke. Unfortunately, we have to prioritize projects. Trust me, your, your, your streets are being looked at, and some, some delays are going to happen until we get through this COVID crisis, and hopefully we'll get back on track once, once everything's back up and running again. With that being said, I'm going to move on to governing body for reports, and I'll start tonight with you, Ed Campbell. I have nothing, okay? Mr. Torres?
Well, I do have something, and it was reinforced on my way into the meeting tonight. We're getting into summer, kids are out on bicycles, having a good time, but they're not watching what they're doing. Just as I was pulling up here, I had a little kiddo just about pull up in front of me on his bicycle. So parents, if you can do whatever you can to instill safety and talk to your kids about being safe on those bicycles, just watch what they're doing. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, George. Mike? Mr. Farmer? Nothing but good things. Want to share some with us? We're alive. It appears we're all healthy. One thing I did have conversation with our chief of police, Josh Horan, and I asked Josh to talk to you, Ethan, I don't know if you have, but there's a pretty major thing in most cities of a safe, safe trade zone, such as Facebook and so forth. And I talked to him about the possibilities of having, you know what they call the safe trade zones or?
Yeah, they set most of them up at like Quakerdome places like that.
Or right outside City Hall with a camera. One concern that he had was the 24/7. But could we, I asked him to look at that, and I don't know why we couldn't have like a little safe trade zone, maybe a parking spot, and have it according to the hours of the offices here, because it has to be apparently a manned camera. But it could be a video camera that goes right into the police department, a camera, computer, whatever, there's something to think about. I was asked about it.
I wouldn't take a look at that if we can do something. I think it'd be a good idea to put that in the city's Facebook.
And the reason I say the police department, most cities that I've been in that have it, it has been at a police department.
Makes sense.
Your sub, what do you call it, substation before everyone's major police department. That's all I have. All right, we will move on to the manager report.
Also by KODMS, I've begun to see some increasing volumes. We're in kind of a lull there a little bit during the pandemic, but starting to see that volume come back. It's like, you know, people are getting a little more comfortable or finding anything they put off for those six, eight weeks is coming, coming home to roost. So they are seeing some increased call volume in that department. We had our first official golf cart registration this past week. So anyone that is interested, we are still registering then. As far as golf, they continue to see increased play, very busy. They are still modifying plans, but should hopefully have their first tournaments here in the coming weeks. Still remaining access to club. Still limiting access to clubhouse and golf superintendent everybody reports they're now up to eighty members. So really seeing those numbers come around, and I think word's getting out about just how nice Westwood is. P D has brought on a new part-time officer, Officer Crowe, who has some previous experience in Heston. And then the Durango came back from being finalized on outfitting there, having the K nine alarm and things installed. We have water tower maintenance, had some lift station issues in public works. One, one pump went down and this has been repaired, now we have another one down that's being looked at. We did have a storm drain collapse on Third between Poplar and Locust, which led to a little sinkhole. As it dries out a little more, we'll excavate that and see what the extent is. And then the skid steer is currently getting a fuel line leak and windshield replaced. And then currently, leak and wind pickup is going on in the city. So follow or look at your newsletter or the website to see what the rules are there. But they will be going through town this week collecting leak and winds. And then as far as parks and recreation, the swimming pool does plan to be open tentatively June fifteenth for general admission for swimming with, with everything we're seeing. Obviously, the changes with the governor vetoing the bill, kind of where the county's at, I believe the county's meeting tonight. So these dates are still very much subject to the change depending on what the county decides to do. But U F C is coming to finish that project, hopefully with the slide and painting. And if not, we'll put some of like the stripe painting off until fall. And then they continue to look at other aspects of programs. Again, a lot of this is subject to change. And as far as finance and administration, we are gearing up for full-on budget. So all of you, please start checking your calendars because next meeting, we're going to be asking you to set that lovely budget work session where we sit down and discuss what, what the next year's going to look like. We get out our crystal balls, so that's, that's where we're at. Apologize for the kind of scatagorical nature, minus my normal computer. So I'm going off my notes, but that's all I have, unless there's any other question.
I need another question.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to do with your reports, but if you brought something to mind. I had a street sweeper going through my house, and I thought something was wrong with it because it wasn't going ten mile an hour. It was going about two mile an hour and doing a great job. Have you gotten any feedback from the street sweepings that we had?
The only feedback I got was they were delayed a little bit in the city they were in before us, or the job they were in before us. So they didn't get to us on the Monday, I think they didn't get here until Wednesday of the week they said they were going to be out. So we did have people calling on Monday Tuesday saying, no, there's no street sweepers in town, what's up? But other than that, I have heard nothing, which I generally anticipate to be a good thing because usually we only get complaints.
I'll add to that, I made on Sixth Street, I know he went by my house probably four times. But when he was done, it was done, it was good. It wasn't a big fog of dust, like.
I think he went by my house six times, I was thinking somebody must have told him more than that. Did you get any report as far as tanning or anything like that?
Not yet, we haven't reached that out. June, but I will probably pass on those comments and see if he can give us that kind of.
It'd be interesting to compare it with what we've seen in the previous year.
Yeah.
What would be interesting is, is seeing what it is this trip through, and then the next trip through, how they compare it.
Well, I'd like to compare it to the previous year with the other guy.
Understand.
And, and I agree, they were going slow enough that they were actually picking up a lot of debris. And I would be surprised if that number wasn't significantly higher than what we've seen with the previous winter.
And they're not finished yet, I've reached out to them this morning, and they need a full week of dry weather to finish the project here, so.
There are some homes that I've driven past, but if the homeowner would go out there with a pickup and a scoop shovel, they could probably save a couple of tons or three tons of dirt that's come out of yards that should have been cleaned up prior to a street sweeper. I don't know how they'll pick up some of what I saw, because I mean, I'm talking, I'm talking dirt, six, eight inches deep. It would save the taxpayers money if they could.
I've actually had to clean my gutters out twice already this year.
Who I was referring to.
Yeah. Just because I don't have grass growing yet, but I have a pillbox. Anyway, we digress. Our agenda's finished this evening, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mike Wallace, second. George Torres, second.
Would you like to review that, Jamie?
Motion by Councilmember Wallace to adjourn the Holstead City Council meeting at eight eleven P M., seconded by Councilmember Torres.
There's the motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, thank you, council, and thank you, Holstead. Thank you, Jamie.